I call this regular meeting of Raton City Commission to order. Could we have a roll call, please, Des?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley.
President.
Commissioner Schuster. Commissioner Jacomo.
President.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Here.
All, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, with all due due diligence, and with the respect and fairness of our citizens.
All right, a couple of announcements. Next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, here in chambers, 6:00 P.M. And we have a couple of proclamations. Or, I'll tell you what, do we have an introduction of a new employee?
Yes, we do. Michael.
Let's do that first, and then we'll meet.
Mayor and Commissioner, it's my pleasure to introduce our new employee, Ms. Taryn Jacomo. She's our administrative and accounting specialist. Ms. Jacomo does come to us with a background in banking, mortgage, and most recently, local government grant management. So we do welcome Taryn aboard and...
Welcome aboard. Say a few words.
Thank you very much. I'm thrilled to be here and I appreciate the opportunity to work with everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2024. Whereas the month of October 2024 has been declared as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly, and whereas the family violence results from the use of force or threat to achieve and maintain control over others in intimate relationships, and abuse of power in society fosters battering by perpetuating conditions which condone violence, and only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police, court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas the Raton alternatives to violence and other agencies throughout the state of New Mexico are working together to provide effective intervention, prevention, community education, and support to build a non-violent family environment in our city. Now therefore, July, James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And witness whereof, I have here in two set my hand and seal, and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 24th day of September 2024. Please, how are you?
I'm good, you, sir? Good.
Okay.
Nice meeting you.
Janice.
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 Alicia.
Hi.
Everybody get in here, and we can squeeze.
Get up. Just in the back of the country.
Are we good?
There you go. Thank you. I appreciate your work. Please, thank you.
As the mayor said, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we appreciate the proclamation. It's a very busy month for us, trying to do activities. On Saturday, the 5th, will be our annual walk, 28 years in a row. We've had a, just a wonderful response from the business community. We have had over 50 corporate sponsors this year, which I think is a record for us. So that's really fantastic. So obviously, I'm not going to stand here and read all 53 or whatever it is, but they knew who they are, and we really appreciate it, and we'll be doing more advertising and putting the list out there. So shop at home, because they support all of us. So on the 5th, we hope for a real good turnout for the walk. We try to get 75 people in that neighborhood, so maybe we could break that. That'd be great. So if you're available, please come and join us. For minimum donation of $25, you get a free tee-shirt, and the tee-shirt has the list of all the corporate sponsors on it. So we really try to get their names out there to really thank them, because obviously, without them, we couldn't do it. And the money raised fills in the blanks, if you will, where the grants from the state and federal government don't allow you to do certain things, so this money, we're able to fill those needs. We see over 300 clients a year, so that's a big number for such a small community. But it's not just Raton. We cover all of Colfax County, and we do have an office over in Clayton, and we cover all of Union County. So we're small, but we're big, if you will. Again, thank you for your support. You're always there for us whenever we need. So thank each and every one of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and all the work that you guys do.
Appreciate it.
Great staff, because it really comes down to my staff.
I've got the best staff around. They're just excellent and dedicated, and we haven't had any turnover in years, which is really great. So I commend my staff. They make it happen. I'm just the head of the snake, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we have a proclamation for National Senior Citizens Center Month. Mayor Pro Tim.
National Senior Center Month, September 2024. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community, and whereas the Colfax County Senior Citizen Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of the City of Raton, and whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, the Colfax County Senior Citizen Center empowers older citizens of the City of Raton to contribute to their own health and well-being, and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas during the pandemic, the Colfax County Senior Citizen Center has been a community partner in ensuring that our most vulnerable citizens, people age 65 and older, many with underlying medical conditions, are cared for and able to stay connected, safe, and healthy. And whereas the one senior center in the City of Raton affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore, does James Neil Sagata Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as National Senior Center Month. And witness whereof, he has set his hand and seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 24th day of September 2024.
I'll make sure I get it.
All right.
All righty, at this time, we'll take committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Jacomo.
RPS board meeting was held on September 23rd at 5:30 P.M. RPS Board's Office Manager, Mrs. Boogie, presented to and approved by the Board the financial statistical information. She reviewed with the Board a letter from Monday, McGowan submitting his resignation. Mrs. McCurry addressed Mr. McGowan, making it for always here as a service to the Board. She also informed the Board that just prior to the board meeting, the trustees held a special meeting, that meeting, Mr. McGowan, and Mr. McGowan was now announced. The trustee then appointed David Swanson to the Raton Public Board to fulfill the minimum vacated by Mr. McGowan. After this discussion, Mrs. McCurry made a motion to elect David Swanson, and newly appointed member vice-chair to the Raton Public Service Board. RPS General Manager Dave Macino reported to the, reported that all the batteries had been replaced in Unit 4. He stated that the Unit 12, Unit 12 had 12 days of production with some derating, air intake temperatures being too high. After reporting of what the unit produced, he stated that engineer, analytics engineers were on site July 30th. After looking into the VFDR, he was determined that more engineering was needed. A report on the solar PV was given due to the weather conditions there was only one full-day production. It was in July. On July, August 20th, lighting hit one of the newly installed primary conductors on West Island Street. The engine ice conducted partially melted and fell to the ground, resulting in several customers being out of power. Mr. Macino addressed the Board, which led to the lengthy discussion regarding 73 conversion. I have a report from the Johnson Memorial Library Friday Board Meeting, which was held on September 17th, 2024 at 5:00 P.M. Library Board, Library Director Danny Marcusin, Rockton, Inor, Markville, and new members at the library. New budget for the year, new budget year began July 1st, 2024, 2023 to 24, the state grant, they need money, had been spent, and the final report was submitted, reporting for the 2024, 2025, which will be submitted on or before August 2024. The report will determine how much money the library will receive for the year 2022 go upon this money. Deadline for the state report was August 12, 2024, and it was submitted on August 4th, which we had no any reports of it being flagged, or which means that the report has been accepted. Work continues, rearranging the basement of the library areas. Statistical report for March, July, the month of July 2024, donations we collected were zero. Funds collected was $183.73. Copies made was 710.77. Memorials held were zero. Story hours held at library was five, attended by 170 individuals. Programs held was 52, attended by 157 individuals. Statistical report for the month of August 2024, donations we collected were zero. Funds collected was $129.44. Copies made was $592.56. Memorials received was $160. Story hours held was two, attended by four individuals. Programs held, the story hours had were 26, attended by 80. That's all I have, man.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim.
All right. I was absent for our reports last month, but did want to note that I attended the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference in Clovis, New Mexico, August 13th through the 15th. The session's on the 50-year water plan, which is available on the New Mexico State website. So if you Google "New Mexico 50-year water plan," it's pretty important, and it's actually, they've made it pretty user-friendly to read. Very important information there. That session, and then we had some sessions on improving our memory, which were pretty interesting. The next board meeting I'll attend will be October 4th in Santa Fe. I attended the Raton Water Works Board Meetings on August 20th and September 17th. Most recently, Lake Malloya is two and a half feet below the spillway. A major water leak was identified on the water line near the NRA. It has been repaired, but there was quite a bit of water loss there. The Simron System Phase 1 continues to experience various technical issues which are being continually worked on. The new sledge field construction is underway. We approved underwater ultrasonic testing for the 3 million gallon water tank, and we fine-tuned the procurement policy, which will be approved next month. We'll be up for approval next month. We discussed the credit card policy, and we'll be having further discussions on that next month. We're waiting on the state's comments for the city's water conservation plan, and the general manager is working on a list of water and wastewater projects that are in process, and a list of our needs for the next five to 10 years, so we can pass that data along to the Municipal League for unfunded water projects. On August 22nd, the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board met on, and I attended via Zoom. I know Mayor Sagata was in attendance. I missed his report probably in the last month, but I just wanted to comment that a highlight was a special presentation on climate change modeling for our region done by the South Central Climate Adaptation Science Center out of the University of Oklahoma. And interestingly enough, it corresponded with a lot of the data in the state's 50-year water plan research. Overall, there was very little change for Colfax County in terms of the amount of precipitation, but it's predicted by 2050 that storms will get heavier with more rainfall in a single day, and that our average number of warmer to hotter days will increase. And essentially, that potential for increasing weather extremes makes it vital that we keep up with our hazard and emergency planning efforts. One other noteworthy item is that when dues were sent out, North Central also provided a list of, to all the members of the services, which is very extensive and impressive of everything that they do. All the services are very practical and based on the needs from the members, related to EDA projects, to grant writing services, lots of different planning services, transportation, GIS, and community project assistance. North Central is truly valuable to our city and our region, and I know as a city, we use their services all the time. Over the past two months, I attended multiple virtual meetings regarding the National Park Service Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Assistance Technical Grant. Our next meeting will be held virtually on Friday. The current effort is mapping and inventorying our city parks. We will meet in person for two days in late October to do some park site visits and some visioning, and there will be chances for public input before we do any official park planning. The work is still very preliminary. On September 10th, I attended the Ports to Plains Alliance Board Meeting on Zoom. I was not able to attend the conference in person this year. We discussed strategies and timing for the Washington DC fly-in, probably later in March this year, the last week or the week that kind of splits March and the beginning of April. And we would like to hold an alliance reception with key sponsors one evening. The later date will probably require that all our community project funding requests will be already submitted by the time we go to DC, so we can follow up with them. So we kind of have to navigate that as a city, and then be able to discuss that directly with the legislatures. The finances of Ports to Plains Alliance are in good shape. We did also receive a federal legislative update from our lobbyists. Appropriation bills are stalled, but they're still hopeful of compromise. Our I-27 funding requests are secure and likely to pass. President Lauren Gardunio has done a lot of work talking to all the state DOTs in the alliance at some different conferences, and he's working as much as he can with New Mexico DOT as well. He's been in our area through the summer, talking with Des Moines, Union County, and Clayton, and he will be attending our Economic Development Summit next month to present on a transportation panel. The alliance is involved in Clayton's I-27 alignment study and said NMDOT has decided to expand the Clayton alignment study scope to the whole corridor alignment in New Mexico, including Raton. So any future appropriations that we've been seeking will probably go to that scope for the entire corridor. There was a discussion that perhaps NMDOT should be making these project requests and not the individual municipalities, but nothing was concluded. Clayton officials haven't heard and had any headway yet with the governor's office requesting the future I-27 signage ceremony, so they were going to be reaching out to Senator Luhon's office, as he's been very, very supportive and has been in the area multiple times. Our next Ports to Plains Board Meeting will be in December, probably the first week, and will be virtual. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Honeyfield, do you have any reports?
No.
Okay, it's, thank you. As for myself, attended the RPS meeting with Commissioner Jacomo. Commissioner Jacomo did a fine job on the reports, so I don't need to reiterate what happened there. Have the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Executive Board Meeting will be this Thursday. Be participating in that. October 4th, I have a New Mexico Self Insurers Fund meeting coming up. A board member there, I'll be participating. And then as Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley stated, there's a New Mexico Municipal League meeting, October 24th. Will be participating in that. This past Saturday, I participated in the Recovery and Remembrance Event at the Convention Center. Was a well-put-on event, well-attended, and was very nice. And I also attended virtually the capital outlay orientation meeting. That's where we discuss various ways to submit capital outlay, and that for this year, we started gearing up for that. Other than that, business as usual. All righty. Item 6. Items from citizens present, at this time, we will take comment from the public. If you've got something that is related to an item on the agenda, please wait until that item comes up. Anyone wishing to address this at this time may do so. Just approach the podium and state your name and business.
Good evening. Aunt Tyes Better City. I just wanted to invite and welcome everyone to come to a couple events coming up related to economic development. So we have tomorrow, we have the Core Business Mixer, that's going to be happening at Gate City on their final evening of operating as a business here. We have the Trinidad Lastanamas Chamber of Commerce is actually going to be coming and presenting. They are now becoming, they have voted to become a regional Chamber of Commerce, and so they want to come to Raton and talk about how, you know, businesses in Raton might participate in the chamber, and, you know, that's something that's been in conversation for the last year, so I think it would be a great opportunity for everyone to come and learn more. So that's tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 at Gate City Craft Bar. And then also, the Economic Development Summit is coming up in three short weeks. So I just wanted to remind everyone to please RSVP, because there is food, and there's different things that we need to account for, so we have to have everyone RSVP. So I hope, I know a couple of the commissioners have already RSVP'd, but it'd be great if everyone could attend, and of course, anyone in the community. We have an amazing lineup of people from the EPA, from New Mexico Environmental Department, from NMDOT, from Ports to Plains, North Central New Mexico Economic Development, of course, people from the city, Kansas City, or sorry, Kansas State University TAB, the Technical Assistance Program, they're also coming. And then there's people coming from all over. We have people that have RSVP'd from as far as Tucumcari and Cuesta, and also, you know, up in Colorado as well. So it's becoming like a really great event. I'm really excited, and I just hope everyone comes and participates. Thanks for everyone who's helped with it.
Thank you.
Oh, and our sponsors, Inbank and Raton Main Street. Sorry, forgot that word.
Anyone else? All right, seen none, we'll move on to the business portions. Item 7A, deliberate and act on approval of the September 10th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. You've had a chance to go on, there are some minor corrections to be made to the minutes.
More than one, or just the one?
I think it's just the one.
I think it just had one, item I.
So if there are no other corrections to be made, the minutes would stand approved as presented. Any conversation, discussion, meetings, minutes stand approved, then, thank you. Item B, deliberate and act on event forums. First up, Raton Main Street Downtown Trick or Treat, October 31st. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, Raton Main Street and the Raton Police Officers Association will host the 14th Annual Safe Trick or Treat Event on Thursday, October 31st, 2024. The trick-or-treaters will walk to participating businesses for their goodies. It will start at Ripley Park at 3:30 and end at 6:00 P.M. at the Alx Lodge. Inside your packet is a certificate of liability insurance and the application form, signed by the Police Chief, Fire Chief, Public Works Director, City Clerk, and myself. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative on this action.
All right, any comments, questions for Mr. Mestes?
Make a motion to approve the Raton Main Street Downtown Trick or Treat, October 31st event forum.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the event? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chris, did you want to say anything about it?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions that you online have had or comments, but hope to see all your kids out there.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Alternatives to Violence Domestic Violence Awareness Walk Run, October 5th. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, Alternative to Violence will host their 28th Annual Walk Run on Saturday, October 5th, 2024. There will be a one-mile, three-mile, and five-mile route. It will start at Ripley Park at 8:30 a.m. Inside your packet is a certificate of liability insurance, a map of the routes, and application form signed by the Police Chief, Fire Chief, Public Works Director, City Clerk, and myself. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative on this action.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? This was the group that was here earlier, and this was their event.
Motion to approve the Alternatives to Violence Domestic Violence Awareness Walk Run, October 5th.
Motion and second to approve the event for Alternatives to Violence? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Item C, deliberate and act on Center for Community Innovation Skill Sharp subcontractor Agreement. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is an annual agreement between the City of Raton and the Northeastern Education Foundation, doing business as the Center for Community Innovation, to provide learning resources for the purpose of economic development and support of the workforce development for small businesses. The services provide thousands of video-based training and games at your fingertips by smartphone or PC. Skill Sharp for Business contains extensive library of online video-based training content and learning tools. Video lessons are supplemented with articles, downloads, and other materials to help employees gain skills to be more successful in the workplace. The cost is $2,000 per month and comes from the Economic Development GRT. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative on this action.
Right, and I believe we have Patricia here to give us some information.
Just wanted to give you a quick six-month overview of what we've been doing. So we have, since last year, we decided to take a pivot on our programming and decided that we needed to go after some grant funds to make this a full-time position. We needed someone that can, you know, hold our clients' hands and walk them through career readiness, you know, job readiness, as well as if they wanted to get their high school equivalency or their GED in essence. And so we went after some grant money, got a full-time position going, and we hired Bianca Patterson, and she just took off running, and she was exactly what this program needed. And so with that, you can see just on the update on that second page, you could just see where she got hired in August, and how her number, or from July, from July 2023, how those numbers just skyrocketed. And it was because we needed that face-to-face person that would do those follow-ups, that would be on clients and say, what can I do to help you get the job that you need, or what, you know, what are the things that we can do? A couple of success stories is, through her, we have been able to have five people get their diploma within the last year, which has been very exciting. One of them actually was a gal from Des Moines, 16-years-old, you know, really wanted to start her college early, studied at home. Bianca kind of walked her through. She came in one day in May, took all her t- She came in one day in May, took all her tests, passed, and she got her diploma right away. A couple of others is we have, at the center specifically, we needed to, we can't have a million Patricias, so we hired an intern, actually 19, 20-years-old, through the Help New Mexico WEO program as an intern, and she was just helping us out with our Skill Sharp program at the time, helping, you know, answer some phone calls. And I said, hey, are you going to go to college? What's the plan? And she said, well, I don't, college isn't for me, but I really want to do design, I want, I'm creative, I've done art. And I said, well, I have a contract coming up, how about you take some Skill Sharp classes, I get you some training, let's see where you're at, apply for the job, and we'll see if you get it. She got it, and right now she is, we created a job at the center through Skill Sharp, which has been awesome, and we have a contract with the county doing county tourism, which is, which is similar to Explor Raton. Another success story that we have is we were able to help over the summer, help three out of the four people with their resumes get hired into the position that they needed to get hired, specifically CDL, that was a big one. We had probably three or four students that came in, were not sure if they wanted to dip their toe into commercial driving. We set them up with Skill Sharp, they started taking classes. I believe one of them is trying to take official CDL licensing and one actually to get their CDL. So we're really working hand-in-hand with our different agencies. Town of Office, Pinwheel, we're working with our healthcare professionals. We have people right now doing grant writing, learning how to be a grant writer through, we need that here in Raton. We also have people, I think the biggest demographic that we're seeing is that those young adults that don't want to go to college, they're wanting to jump in the workforce right away, so we're trying to help them. Right now, I'm helping a gal who is actually looking to start her own real estate business here, and she's taking courses on Skill Sharp. So lots of great resources, 7,000 courses, tons of industries where people can upskill their resume, even their, even employees can get for free where they can train their employees on whatever they need. So it's a really great resource, and it's been, it's been very great to see just all the changes we've made and how much Bianca has made an impact. And so, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Patricia?
I was curious, you're promoting a workshop to New Mexico State Parks?
Yes, we are. So we got called, one of our partners, Chiqui Lee Gomez, he had, State Parks had called them, so we're coming to do a fall training that we do every year. We're doing it here in Raton. Can you have anyone that can help us with phone and email etiquette? He said, I know just the people, because this is exactly what we do. So we are, we will be hosting about, I think, 60 to 80 people, and we'll be training them through Skill Sharp, taking them through what we know, and I'm also doing a presentation and sending them off with how to answer phones, how to answer emails, those sorts of things. So we're excited.
Yes.
Any other questions? Good job, great results.
Thank you.
Sees it increasing all the time.
Yes.
And this is the demographic we need.
Yes.
That says you're up 12%.
Yes.
Cool.
And have you hired someone new as that?
Yes, we did hire someone, and we, we didn't think she was a great fit, so we rehired, and we rehired Anita Verdean, and she'll be helping us get back and go away. And so she's, she's actually the one doing the state parks, so we're excited to have her there.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Center for Community Innovation Skill Sharp subcontractor agreement.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement between Center for Community Innovation Skill Sharp subcontractor. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Patricia, keep it up. Good seeing you too, Jeff. Just standing there in the background there.
Yeah, yeah, no, Patricia's doing a fabulous job.
Great.
Yeah.
Item D, deliberate an act on Municipal Emergency Services MES quote for rescue task force point-blank body armor with plates and helmets for Raton Fire and Emergency Services utilizing the Fire Protection Funds and Sourcewell Contract 010424. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, this purchase is for $28,549 and will purchase rescue task force point-blank body armor with plates and helmets for fire and EMS. As you know, sometimes they respond to dangerous situations, whether it might be domestic violence or shooting or so forth. And this protective equipment will bring the fire department up to safety standards when reporting to dangerous calls. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative on this section, action, excuse me.
Alrighty, any comments, questions? This is coming from Fire Protection Funds.
I'll make a motion to approve the Municipal Services Agreement quote for rescue task force point-blank body armor with plates and helmets for Raton Fire and Emergency Services utilizing Fire Protection Funds and Sourcewell Contract 010424.
Motion and a second to approve the purchase. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate an act on covenant of purpose use and ownership for the film studio and education center project between the City of Raton and EDA. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the Economic Development Administration awarded a federal grant to the city in the amount of $2 million as funding for a film studio and education center located in the city. Our council reviewed the applicable laws of New Mexico and certified that the city cannot provide the EDA a first priority lien to secure the award. Based on municipalities are created by statute and only have powers set forth in the statutes creating municipalities. In New Mexico, the statute saying fourth municipal powers is found in New Mexico State Statutes 1978 3-18-1, which grants specific powers, including the power to enter into contracts or leases to acquire and hold real property and to protect generally the property of the municipality and its inhabitants. This statute does not confer to the city the specific power to grant a first priority lien, which is what they are requesting. Further, a first priority lien on city property could put the ownership of city property at risk and would be contrary to the city's obligation to protect municipal property for the benefit of the city and its residents. Our council concluded that the city is prohibited from granting a first priority lien to EDA supported by other legal authority. As a general rule, the absence of legislative authority to do so, a municipal corporation or county is powerless to mortgage or pledge property its own, and any attempt so to encumber its property is invalid. Although the city has the power to acquire and hold property, this power does not confer the specific power to mortgage such property. In lieu of a first priority lien, the city is entering a covenant of purpose and ownership that for a period of 15 years from the date of the award, the city will not sell, lease, transfer, convey, encumber mortgage, or otherwise delineate any right or interest in the project property for purposes other than or different from the purposes set forth in this award. The city recommends that you act in affirmative on this action.
Comments or questions for Mr. Mestes?
I did read this pretty carefully, and it does look like with the written approval of the EDA, we could make a change to this contract and things like that. It looks like it's still very amenable to the project and to the property, and still gives the city the authority with permission to do.
That is correct.
Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the Covenant of Purpose Use and Ownership for the Film Studio and Education Center Project between the City of Raton and the EDA.
A motion and a second to approve the Covenant of Purpose. Is there any further discussion? Dez, can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigada?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item F, deliberate an act on revised Aquatic Center Pump Rebuild Estimate from Alpha Southwest, Inc., utilizing State Price Agreement Number 40000002300018. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, as you know, the pumps at the Aquatic Center are getting towards their end of life, and to extend their life, the city obtained an estimate for the Aquatic Center Pump Rebuild from Alpha Southwest Incorporated using a state price agreement. The cost to rebuild five motors for the pumps is $91,449.74. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative on this action.
Alrighty, any comments, questions for Mr. Mestes?
Mr. Mestes, is the funding source the GRT or is it, that goes to the Aquatic Center or is it a general fund?
General fund.
It is, I'm sorry, the GRT for the Aquatic Center. Thank you.
And Jayden, I'm assuming you kind of checked some of this out?
Yes, I've been involved throughout it. They, there have been many changes, in fact, this is the second change order. The reason being is as they pull these pumps apart, pull these motors apart, they find out that, well, wait a minute, this shaft is rested out, I can't actually reuse that. I have to actually completely replace the motors. And this second change order actually reduces the total cost from what was previously approved.
Alright, any other comments or questions?
We did want to be clear on that, that you had taken previous action in January, and then we brought another change order back to you in July. This replaces both of those. We would be avoiding those POs and reissuing them.
Good to know.
Yeah, that's great to know. I'll make a motion to approve the revised Aquatic Center Pump Rebuild Estimate from Alpha Southwest, Inc., utilizing State Price Agreement 40000002300018.
A second. Motion and a second to approve the rebuild estimate from Alpha Southwest. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate an act on Memorandum of Agreement between the City of Raton and the New Mexico State Game Commission by and through the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish regarding the purchase of Bartlett Mesa, Colfax County, New Mexico. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, last week, the city intended to bring forward the Memorandum of Agreement between the Department of Game and Fish and the City of Raton for the purchase of land on Bartlett Mesa in Colfax County. Due to the last-minute error, we postponed the MOU on the last meeting and bring it to you here tonight. The city received an appropriation of $564,000 from New Mexico State Legislature to fund part of the purchase of the property by the Department of Game and Fish. The department has agreed to fund the remaining purchase price of the property. The department and the Nature Conservancy are scheduled to close on the purchase of the property before the end of the year, and the city and the department agree to that on or before the date of closing, the city will transmit $564,000 to Title Services Incorporated. In accordance with instructions to be provided by Title Services Incorporated, to honor before the date of closing, the department will transmit the amount of the remaining purchase price to Title Services in accordance with instructions to be provided. Upon closing, the New Mexico State Game and Commission shall be the sole owner of the property in fee simple, and the city shall have no ownership interest in the property. After closing, the department will manage the property as a wildlife management area to conserve wildlife habitat, to provide increased outdoor recreation access, and operatives for the public and the city. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative on this action. And as you recall, we have had both briefings by the Nature Conservancy, and the Chief of Staff and I did travel to Santa Fe and made sure that, you know, we're clear on this process going forward.
Alright, this has been something that's been in front of us for a while. Is there any further comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Memorandum of Agreement between the City of Raton and the New Mexico State Game Commission by and through the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish regarding the purchase of Bartlett Mesa, Colfax County, New Mexico.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the Memorandum of Agreement. Is there any further discussion? I would just like to point out too that this also increases the size of Sugar Canyon State Park in doing this. Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Dez.
Yes, sir. Mayor Sigada?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yep.
Motion carries. Sorry, we did a roll call there. Thank you. Item H, deliberate an act on Resolution 2024-53 Destruction of Records Held by the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, the library has submitted a list of records proposed for destruction and is attached. Most are old purchase orders along with old contracts and a grant. The city clerk has reviewed and agrees that the proposed destruction conforms with the city retention and disposition schedule and are no longer required and may be destroyed. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative on this action.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions for Mr. Mestes?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-53 Destruction of Records Held by the Arthur Johnson Memorial Library.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-53. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate an act on Resolution 2024-54 Participation in Transportation Project Fund Program administered by the New Mexico Department of Transportation, and approval of agreement and pledge of matching funds. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, city and the State Department of Transportation have entered into agreement under the Transportation Fund Program for a local road project on Second Street in Raton. The total cost of the project is $900,000, where the state will pay 95% or $855,000, and the city shall pay 5% or $45,000. The purpose of this agreement is for preliminary engineering, design, construction, construction management, and testing on Business Loop 17 or I-25. Replacement of sidewalks, medians, and limited pavement rehabilitation and maintenance, and drainage, and some building painting. The city, this will be funded through, the $45,000 will be funded through street improvements and gas tax. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative on this action.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Mestes? So I have one. I guess this is just the design phase of this, or is this going to encumber?
No, this includes engineering, design, construction, construction management, so... $100,000 of design is a lot.
Well, $900,000 on, on Second Street's not going to go very far. What's this true? I was just wondering.
Question, is there any going to mill in the center or the payment?
I believe that is part of that, the sidewalk scudders and all of that. So I, I don't think they've done the study yet to exactly what they're going to prioritize on, but yes, this can pay for things in the median.
Are we allowed to ask?
Sure. So where, does that mean the Second Street Road, I mean, where the fat, they've saw those...
This is going to be my next question.
That was my question, too.
And that's where it's needed. I'd rather have that than sidewalk.
Yeah, we're gonna...
Because of safety reasons, I mean.
Right. They're going to come up here and probably present us with a plan of what they're going to do, and we'll go from there. And I'm sure they're generally, since it's a US highway, there probably will be some public input on that, I'm guessing.
If I may, Mayor, it's in the description, it says, replacement of sidewalk, curb and gutter, WCR. I'm not sure what that is. Concrete median and detectable panels. Scope also includes limited asphalt pavement rehabilitation, maintenance, drainage, and bridge painting. I absolutely... I absolutely agree that hopefully those speed bumps will be taken care of, because it's getting really severe.
That's not a very good description, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and give them a benefit of the doubt that the asphalt pavement improvements will be those bumps, hopefully. We'll, we'll find out, though. Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-54, participation in transportation project fund program administration administered by the NM DOT, and approval of agreement and pledge of matching funds from the city of forty-five thousand dollars.
A motion and a second to adopt resolution 2024-54. Any further comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item J, public hearing, deliberate and act on resolution 2024-55, C-3 to R-1, rezone request for property located at 2018 La Mesa Drive, UPC number 1135183104050, Land 1, the old La Mesa airstrip. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the planning and zoning officer and the city engineer have studied the current zoning map and have identified the old La Mesa airstrip contains multiple zoning districts that are inconsistent with the current use of property and the proposed future use in the comprehensive plan. City staff recommend changing the C-3 portion to R-1. Randy Madison, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board, has submitted a letter supporting this change. And this is the old airport. Mr. Honeyfield, you did request that we go talk to the county, which we did at this last county commission meeting. While the county did not give their support because this was not a voteable action, they would like to receive additional information. But again, this is cleaning up our map, and whatever happens to that property, whether it stays vacant, or if we change it to residential, or if we change it to industrial, it's going to have to be rezoned anyway. But this is bringing the entire property into the same R-1 zone.
Mark, you have any comments?
No, not particularly. I'm still not in favor of this zoning change, but go ahead.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I would like to note that the C-3 is a general and highway servicing district is what it's currently zoned as, and a huge portion of that property is already zoned R-1 residential district, which I spent some time looking at our old map and kind of figuring that out, so. However, I do have a concern, if we're going to just rezone it again in the future, why would we rezone it now? So, I hate to go flip-flopping on zoning.
Personally, I think if most of that area is R-1, we're bringing it into what is already there. So, I don't really foresee near future of this rezoning. Mr. Madison, you have any comments?
Yes, as this was brought to the board by the city of Raton, you know, we had our public hearing, listened to input and stuff. The big thing that we're working on is trying to clear up the planning and zoning map, take care of some of this spotting zoning and stuff that we have going on in town. It also works along with the comprehensive plan under land usage. I believe it's about page 104, but don't hold me to that. And by that, we're working to clean the, the planning and zoning map up, which there was money through a grant or something that we've been using and that kind of stuff. Jayden's the spearhead on that and everything, so our recommendation was to do that. The other reason we talked about it as a group in planning and zoning is the fact that you got a property owner with part of his property being R-1 and part of his property being C-3. So, bringing this all into R-1, and I'm not a hundred percent sure who made that decision to bring it before us at the planning and zoning, but it's just a way to clear up the map and get it in any place. If there was ever to be somebody wanting with a whole bunch of money and wanted to build a subdivision out there, of course, it would have to come back before planning and zoning and all the plans and all the infrastructure, and all that would have to be done before anything could be done and that kind of stuff. So, this was nothing more than a move to clear up the planning and zoning.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so any other folks can make comments at this time? There's also an action item on this, so. If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-55, C-3 to R-1 rezone request for property located at 2018 La Mesa Drive, UPC 1135183104050, Land 1, the old La Mesa airstrip.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2024-55. Is there any further discussion? Des, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes three to one. Item L, public hearing, deliberate and act on resolution 2024-57. I, Ms. Kay, I just caught that, thank you. Marty? Public hearing, deliberate and act on resolution 2024-56, R-1 to G, government use district, rezone request for property located at 2018 La Mesa Drive, City of Raton Solar Array. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a change that should have been made years ago. The planning and zoning officer and the city engineer have studied the current zoning map and have identified the new solar array on the south end of having a zoning district that is inconsistent with the current use of property and proposed future use in the comprehensive plan. City staff recommend changing the R-1 portion to G, which is government. Randy Madison, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board, has submitted a letter supporting this change. And as you will know, we just recently, or I should say, RPS has received two million dollars to expand the solar array, so there are going to be a lot more solar panels going out there. This is across the street from you, Mr. Priest. I don't know if you wanted to say anything.
That's why I'm sitting here. Yeah, our address is 2135 La Mesa. We're right across the street. Your gate going into your solar array is in about the middle of my property. I don't have a problem with solar. I've got solar on my house. My problem is with the way this was handled. If a private citizen had done this, if I had put a solar array on my vacant property, what would have happened to me? Without getting rezoned? You know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. My problem is they crammed this down our throat, or the city did. So, what's to stop them from putting a big substation right across the street from my house?
Oh, Mr. Priest, I know we had public.
I'm not Mr. Priest, I'm Butch.
Okay, excuse me, Butch. We had numerous public hearings when we started this project.
I got one letter.
That was required, yes, we were required to send one letter, but there were meetings here at the commission on this when we were talking with the county to get the land and all of that. So, there was time for input. I understand your concerns, and I can't guarantee you somebody would come in and put a, another solar array right there or a substation. I have not seen any plans as such, don't intend to.
May I comment, Mr. Priest?
Sure.
It's my understanding that the action we just took to rezone the rest of that property to R-1 would then make it so that someone would have to come in. And I understand your point about the city not getting it rezoned to government first, I believe is what I'm hearing, what you're saying.
Yes.
And so, as far as I can tell on that property, the only section that's being rezoned to government is the part that's already enclosed for the expansion of a one megawatt of solar. And we can't make, we can't build more than that with our energy contract anyway. And so, we have been given that little piece of property, and that's the only piece that's turning into government. The rest of it, according to the action we just took, would be rezoned as R-1. So, for someone to come and put a substation on R-1, it would take a lot of action.
But I'm not worried about them putting it on R-1. I'm worried about them putting it on this, your rezoning.
This piece, I believe this piece is, is the exact size that we got from the county that fits one megawatt of solar. And that's it, it's 10 acres, and it's all fenced in just for solar.
Yeah, I live there, it's all fenced in. But you're not telling me that the city couldn't come in and say, "We need this structure out there to move this electricity." And you'll put a substation across the street instead of more solar?
No, sir.
I think with our $2 million grant, our, our only intention at this time is solar.
At this time?
Right, and I'm not aware of the need for a substation.
There is not.
I'm not on the RPS board, but, yeah.
I, I just think there should have been more notification on this when it was taking place. We received one letter on this, and I went to the zoning commission meeting. And they apologized, they said it was not handled right, but that doesn't answer my question. I want to put a solar array on my empty property, so I'm going to go have it built, and what are you going to do to me?
I understand your frustration. I hear what you're saying, and we can't go back in time and fix it, but I think we, we're getting your message.
I believe if it's your property, you want to build a solar array there, and it's zoned, you can do that, and we're not going to.
But my property is zoned R-1.
Well, you would go through the steps, you would go to the zoning commission.
You didn't.
I think you've made your point, sir, I really do.
This is, yeah, when we worked this through the county and the process, apparently, we did miss a step. I apologize for that, we did miss a step. It was an oversight on our part. Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-56, R-1 to G, government use district, rezone request for property located at 2018 La Mesa Drive, City of Raton Solar Array.
A second.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution 2024-56. Any further discussion? Des, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Sigata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacamo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero, thank you. Item L, public hearing, deliberate and act on resolution 2024-57, MHS to C-3, rezone request for property located at 1133 Price Street, UPC 1135184350290, L and 1, the Trade Winds Mobile Home Park. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, the planning and zoning officer and city of Gudere have studied the current zoning map and have identified the Trade Winds Mobile Home Park located at 1133 Price Street, having a zoning district that is inconsistent with the current use of the property and proposed future use in the comprehensive plan. City staff recommended changing the MHS portion to C-3. Randy Madison, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board, has submitted a letter supporting this change.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Madison?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We actually tabled this the first go-around because we waited for some information from council, and I don't know if you have that in front of you or not, that by changing this to C-3, and it was summarized by Jayden here again, and stuff, that they can continue to work and run their mobile home park just as it is. We also learned some things, in fact, that there's a couple areas, other areas, that we could put mobile home parks if it ever became an issue. So, in turn, because we found that out, we'd be doing no harm to their business or anything by changing the zoning of this, and it goes back to, as City Manager Mestes said, looking at the comprehensive plan, land usage, these types of things, and trying to bring the planning and zoning map again into, so it's not chopped up and we have all areas consistent. The Planning and Zoning Board went ahead and is approved the change and made the recommendation to you.
Thank you, as you've stated, there is no change in their ability to operate as a mobile home park.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
If it is sold, would there be standards that would have to be met for it to maintain to be a mobile home park? Or would it need to be a C-3 if it were sold, which could potentially be very valuable? But I'm not sure on that.
So, Mayor, Commissioner?
Jayden Welch, city engineer. The, I apologize for not bringing the summary. Hopefully, I don't know if you have it here, if you don't, I will provide it. But the, in summary, they can continue to operate as a mobile home park as long as they meet the local and state standards for, for mobile home parks. So, those same requirements would apply to whoever they sell it to. Whoever they sell it to could also continue to operate it as a mobile home park.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
On your address, you state 1133 Price Street. That's only the north section of the trailer park, there are two addresses to this.
1133.
1135 is the seller's, the biggest part. I don't know why you're splitting them.
Are both addresses listed on the property description?
I don't know, there's, there's two sets of mailboxes down there. Through the post office, that's what we have.
I'm looking at the county assessor stuff, and it only lists the 1133 Price Street address. That's all that's listed on record.
So then, does this apply to both, since it's two addresses there?
I think you'll have to look at the square footage there.
It's 2.66 acres. No, on all the documentation we have for the land, it just has the one address. It says, do you happen to know the size of your lot?
The whole lot, yes.
Is it the 2.66 acres?
Yes, that's the whole.
That's the whole, the whole thing, and on all of the records that we have from the county assessor just lists the one address.
But it has that acreage, yeah.
And it has the right acreage, 2.66 acres.
It calls it, it doesn't call it an address, it calls it, I don't even know what that word is.
Situs address?
I don't know if that, S-I-T-U-S? I don't know what that means, like, like the.
Citizen's address.
I don't know what that means, yeah.
So, when we base these resolutions, we base them off of the legal description? And so. And so, the, and then also known as, and then we give an address, it is possible for parcel or a group of parcels to have multiple addresses.
Sure.
I can look back into it. I, this is the first time the concern was raised with this parcel, and so, I wouldn't be able to provide anything better than that.
Google has solved it. So, referring to it in that way means that the properties with multiple addresses, the address is not always the same as the other addresses. It's an address used on the tax records for the entire property. So, that's, that's, I think, the legal county description, even though you have multiple mailing addresses.
Thank you.
According to that. And I think that's why it's not just labeled as the address on the records.
And our other question was, he answered it, if we still look, can they run it as a mobile home park? Yes, I guess. Which, and that's without going through the zoning and everything again?
Yes.
That's correct. As long as they're meeting the...
Okay, 'cause we, you want to read which end?
Well, it was brought to our attention that if we sold, we may have to, or whoever would have to, within 300 feet of the area, get 100% signatures saying that this location continues to be a mobile home. Will they have to do that?
If you rezone further down in the thing, to the south.
So, this is for establishing the location of mobile home parks from our ordinance And before approval is granted for a mobile home park application, the proposed development should be examined with regard to, and so, since it would be a pre-existing development...
Should be ours.
So, they wouldn't need those...
Yeah, it should be all right. Because you are a mobile home park now.
Yes.
And if you sold it, and that was the intent, again, it's...
You should...
You should be all right.
If they want to change anything else, then they can...
Then they can go through the process, yes.
Yes.
That's a great question. One other question I have is, has, have the owners been provided the state and local requirements needed to, to meet that, you know, if, that it can be sold as that if it meets state and local requirements? Is there something that we can provide just as information?
So, I believe, were, were you provided the state, the packet with the state mobile home?
At the zoning meeting, one of the zoning persons gave her, gave us her copy. That's all we have.
So, I believe it was given. It's also found, the local requirements are found in city ordinances, which you were just quoting from.
Yeah, and we have a copy of that. We can get from you, you got three.
And there was, back in the 80s, a, what would you call it? A three-year period given to bring...
Three-year grace period?
Yeah, yeah. And so, basically, if, if that hadn't been enforced, our attorney recommended that we basically reinstitute a three-year grace period for parks that need to be brought back up to snub. We haven't even, but barely started that process.
And if, if I may, that would actually be code enforcement, not planning.
That you work on the state and local requirements?
Yes.
And so, they would need to?
Yes.
Any other comments? Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-57, MHS to C3 Rezone Request for Property Located, according to county records, at 1133 Price Street, UPC 1135184350290, Land 1, The Trade Winds Mobile Home Park.
One second.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-57. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Liz.
Yes, sir. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
No.
Motion passes 3 to 1. Thank you. Item M, Public Hearing, Deliberate an Act on Resolution 2024-58, Adopting the Official Zoning Map of the City of Raton. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, with the changes tonight, we are now able to update and adopt the city zoning map with corrections for previous errors and improved zoning boundary alignment. The city recommends that you act in the affirmative on this action.
Any comments, questions? This will no longer be a draft. Correct.
I did have one question, and I mentioned to Mr. Mestes right before the meeting, because I hadn't had time to review it, but since I missed the last meeting on zoning, the portion on the southeast corner that has the, it has a large governmental area in blue, and then above that has a purple H1? I don't know if you want to just come up? I had notes that that one was, was misrepresented on the map. And it was supposed to be a C3 that had been corrected a long time ago, but the map had an error. But I don't, I don't know if my memory is correct. I just had notes saying that that should have been a C3 years ago, this one, and it had been corrected, but the map was incorrect. So, I just wondered if you knew...
I can check that very quickly. This was one that had not been reflected, this C3 right here in the whole...
There, maybe I have the wrong one marked.
So, just across the highway from it, kind of? So, I'm not sure if that might...
I might have had my wrong one marked on my map. Yeah. Okay. So, that's the one that we're correcting.
That's correct, yes.
I bet that's what I did. Thank you.
I worked on this not many months ago.
I know this has been a project in a lo, a long time that we've been wanting to do for years, and it's nice to see the progress in, in getting it up to scratch with our comprehensive plan.
Any other comments, questions? Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-58, Adopting the Official Zoning Map of the City of Raton.
A motion and a second. Any other discussions? Yes, one more. Roll call, vote, please.
Yes, sir. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
No.
Let Director Cho, 3 to 1, in favor. Thank you. Item N, Deliberate an Act on Resolution 2024-59, Authorization to Close New Mexico Bank and Trust Accounts. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to call forward Raton City Chief of Staff, Ms. Michaela Antinucci.
Thank you, Randy.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. We bring to you this evening a resolution. We've been working for several months to transfer bank accounts. We have quite a few accounts. It's been a little slow with some accounts because we do do a lot of, like, ACH deposits. So, like, all of our grocery receipts tax distributions, things of that nature, ACH. And then, we also have some accounts where various insurance companies deposit payments for ambulance payments and what have you. So, we're still kind of trying to work through all the various companies and trying to get that updated. A lot of our grants, whether it's, you know, FAA, for instance, all of that gets deposited ACH. So, we're bringing an action to you this evening just to get the authorization so as we begin to start closing out various accounts. This is something the bank will require. We do have a few accounts that we may allow to remain open for a little while so that maybe an ACH doesn't get rejected or something like that. But the intent is to fully transition all of our accounts to Inbank. They were awarded the RFP in the previous fiscal year. So, I've detailed out the accounts and the account numbers on the resolution. Stand for any questions?
Any questions for Michaela?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-59, Authorization to Close New Mexico Bank and Trust Accounts.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-59. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, Mark, I got a little fast there, buddy.
Oh, that's okay.
Motion carries. I gotta, you're like an official at the football game. I gotta wait for the delay. Item O, Deliberate an Act on Resolution 2024-60, In Code Fiscal Year 24, Final End Year. Michaela?
I apologize right off the bat. I see that it says James Knowles Sagata, Mayor Protim.
Been promoted, yes.
We will get that corrected before we have you sign that. We do bring to you this evening, I'm in the process of doing the physical closeout of our accounting system for FY '24. Hopefully, I have that done by the end of the week. Once that process is complete, we'll then load the new FY '25 budget, which has been approved, and then our accounting system will be completely set up for FY '25. So, just a few adjustments that we still need to make in the accounting system. One of the reasons that we did transition away from New Mexico Bank and Trust, I mean, we did do an RFP and scored it, and Inbank did receive our contract. But, you know, during the course of our relationship with New Mexico Bank and Trust, they started assessing us a lot of service charges and bank fees, and a lot of it was based on number of ACH transactions. So, the fees vary every month, and so, you can't really budget for that. As a concession, they did make some adjustments to our interest rates so that maybe the interest would offset some of the fees, and so, we appreciated that. But now that we're transitioning these accounts away from New Mexico Bank and Trust, we won't see the bank fees anymore. So, I'm just asking to incorporate these line items so that I can do some adjustments as part of our year-end close for the payroll clearing, the two municipal court accounts. But like I said, once we transition to New Mexico, or Inbank, we won't see any bank fees. So, with that, I would recommend approval. Stand for any questions?
Questions?
Are we able to comment on that?
Sure.
So, we did a request for proposals, and so, it was a formal process. And so, both banks provided us a proposal, and a committee reviewed it.
But there was only two banks, nobody else?
Yeah, only two local banks did do the proposal. And then, we did face-to-face interviews with each bank, and then we made a final decision.
We're required to, to do that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-60, In Code FY '24, Final End Year Adjustments.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-60. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye? Vote?
Aye.
That was, that was, that was aye for the affirmative. I jumped the gun again. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Item P, Deliberate an Act on Resolution 2024-61, August Financial Reports. Michaela?
Mayor and Commissioner, we have completed our reconciliation of the August financial reports. You will see that our available cash, lessard 112 reserve in the general fund is $3,961,403.97. I know I had previously reported that as our grant reimbursements have been coming in, we still need to reimburse the general fund some of those temporary transfers that we completed in the previous fiscal year. So, we'll slowly start to be putting those monies back into the general fund as we reconcile and close out several of these grants. With that, we have some new grants that have been approved this year. So, I do foresee, even with the action taken this evening with the Bartlett Mesa acquisition, I could potentially see me having to come back to the commission to do a temporary transfer out of the general fund for the $564,000. We may have to cash flow that pending getting the reimbursement from DFA from the grant. So, with the action this evening, I'll work on getting a notice of obligation and everything in place that we would need to with DFA. There may even be a disposition of property resolution that I would need to bring to you. Even though we technically don't own the property yet, I think DFA is still gonna need to take that formal action to allow us to transfer the, the property to the game and fish. So, you'll see some actions coming up on that. Another action this evening was the NMDOT grant. Our match was $45,000. And so, we're showing that coming out of the gas tax currently, but if for some reason we continue to have that shortfall in revenue, we don't meet those revenue projections, I could potentially have to come back to the commission to utilize general fund reserves to cover the match. Currently, we have a match for the Three Small Bridges project, and then now the Second Street project. So, you know, we'll continue to monitor that. Our grocery receipts tax report for the month of September did reflect July business activity, and we're still currently approximately 2% above our general fund budget projection. Lodger's tax and the gas tax still kind of reflect a decline in both of those revenues. And I've included both of those comparison reports for you. The lodger's tax, I'll, I'll be interested to kind of see what the September report looks like, because we did have a really busy Labor Day with also the Dawson reunion. So, that always kind of gives us a nice little boost in lodger's tax. And then, of course, the gas tax. Our distribution this month was actually close to 21,000, so we really haven't seen anything in the 20,000 range since probably this time last year. So, hopefully, that's a good indicator that maybe next month, the months after that, we'll start to see a little bit of an increase, but we're, we are gonna have to watch that one very closely. I'm just kind of actively working on trying to onboard some of the new grants. I did close out a grant this week for the Airport CARES Act funding that we got. You might recall that we had three separate CARES Act grants. They were fairly small, but this last one, I think, was $32,000, and we've been using that money to pay the utilities at the airport. So, that was the final one. I, I got it closed out just in time for the end of the federal fiscal year, so we won't have any future reporting on that grant, and it's been fully expended, so. And then, the other thing I've been working on this week was the recruitment grants for fire and police. We are ending the first quarter, so we do have reporting requirements on that. And so, just trying to make sure that we fully expend all of those funds before the end of the fiscal year. Other than that, is there any questions that anybody has specific to the financial report?
Looks like the cannabis tax is down as well.
Thirty-five percent.
Yeah, I guess I kind of skipped over that one, sorry.
Mark? Honeyfield?
Has left.
I'm not real sure what happened in August, but that one was $892. I do have an email into Tax and Rev currently, because there was something that happened like back in March or April, and it was supposedly some sort of an amended return, and it resulted in an adjustment on our report. And they said that we were gonna have to pay them money, but nobody reached out to me, like, to write a check. So, I don't know if maybe they took it out of our distribution, but I'm trying to get clarification on that, so I think David Montieth is my contact. So, hopefully, I can bring something back to you at the next meeting once I get a response from him on the cannabis. Because like I said, last I had heard from our contact over there, they said, "Oh, they're gonna be contacting you to..." Because like I said, last I had heard from our contact over there, they said, oh, they're going to be contacting you to pay back some monies, but I never got anything. So I don't know if they're just deducting it, which could be a possibility. I would rather Tax and Rev tell me that or give me some sort of a letter.
Just on their reputation alone in the past.
Just for our records.
Any other questions, comments?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-one, August financial reports.
We have motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one. I was waiting for more. There's no further discussion. All in favor, vote by sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item Q, deliberate an act on resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-two, budget adjustment number two fiscal year twenty-five. Mike Land.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, we do have budget adjustment number two. I do have some line item adjustments within the, the general fund. We are looking to transfer funds out of the general fund for the pledged matching funds for the two airport projects, our taxiway B and our electrical vault. We had initially, you know, did the final budget just kind of off of estimates, but I think it was September thirteenth, we did get the fully executed grant agreements back from FAA on those projects. So under the Fund three hundred, I've actually corrected the line items to reflect the actual amount of the grants awarded. For FAA, the state, the FAA covers ninety percent, the state would be nine percent, and then the city's match is still just the one percent. So actually a really good deal for us. Once we can get both of these projects completed, that's well in excess of three million dollars. So under the NMDOT projects, I've updated that to account for the action taken this evening for the Second Street Improvement Project, including the transfer coming out of our street improvement, the gas tax revenues. And then also at the previous meeting, you took action for the replacement of the senior center double stack oven, which we did get a grant from AJ Long Term for that. So I've sent the grant agreement back on that, but I'm still waiting for the fully executed one. So as soon as I get that, I can place the order.
I just found out today they have now made another change in the Capitol Alley. Denise King is now head of Capitol Alley.
Oh, really? So maybe I should follow up with them because I've kind of been anxiously awaiting that so that I could submit like a notice of obligation and get started on the order. So, okay, sounds good. What did you say the name was?
Denise King. She's also in charge of senior services and stuff like that. She's been stressed a bit too far, I believe.
Yeah, they've had a lot of changes in staff there the past year.
All right, any comments, questions on item Q?
No, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-two, budget adjustment number two fiscal year twenty-five.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-two. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by sign of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item R, city manager report. Mr. Mestes.
Bottom line upfront, Mayor and Commissioner, as you know, there was an incident at Raton High School last Tuesday. While this incident is still under investigation, the city coordinated with the school district, county and state officials in the response and investigation. I would like to extend my deepest appreciation for Superintendent of Schools Kristy Medina, the support staff and faculty of the school district, and especially the students who had to endure a stressful situation but kept each other safe. I can report that the chief of police, John Garcia, expertly coordinated with all first responders, including the sheriff, state police, fire, fish and game, state fire marshal, and other public servants, including the public works department and water department, who stepped in to direct traffic to free up law enforcement resources. Did everything run perfect? Not quite. Were there lessons learned? Absolutely. Chief Garcia gave me a thorough briefing on the case the following morning and we discussed everything we could do better and poss, and do better including possible needs. But the bottom line is that every student went home safe that day and there was a long list of people to thank for that. The city, county and state have a lot to be proud of their educated students, first responders and public servants. The Big Rocks, the treasurer is busy meeting the September thirtieth deadlines. The police will be participating in department training in the coming weeks. The fire department engaged in hazardous incident training this week. Public Works, we are currently recruiting for CDL drivers. Please submit applications to the city. Engineering, the city received grant agreements for work needed at the airport so we can start proceeding with work. Facilities, a lot of progress has been made in the basement of the library. I'd like to thank both the library staff and the public works for their effort. The clerks were almost there with their website and will be reporting more in the coming weeks. And of course, economic development. Ms. Ty explained earlier, the Economic Development Summit on October sixteenth and the Summit of Government on October seventeenth. Mentioned in dispatches, a shout out to Danielle Vanderpoel and all the volunteers at Rain for the tremendous amount of thought and effort that went into putting Recovery and Remembrance Day event together on Saturday and for the many other ways they serve the city. Finally, some closings, closing thoughts. The first casualty in war is the truth. This is a military maxim I learned at the Naval War College attributed to the schoolish, the father of Greece tragedy. This maxim can be applied to any crisis. An example of this occurred last Tuesday here in Raton. Social media platforms can be a communication lifeline for students and parents, allowing them to remain in contact. Yet at the same time, in this situation, we are dealing with children where youth is bountiful and maturity not so much. There was and continues to be no shortage of misinformation posted on social media. Navigating social media in times of crisis is more challenging than normal. Social media can be both good and bad in times of crisis. But there are many who want to fill the void when officials are trying to gather what the truth is and the best way to disseminate that information. Communication is about trust. We need to trust our officials and we need to be patient with their work. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Giacomo? Mayor Protim?
Two quick comments. First, just a request that they were proactive on their airport contract, knowing that Express has sold and I don't know if they'll continue to want to run the airport. And I know just to make sure we have a smooth transition and don't have a gap in service at the airport. Second, just to echo a huge thank you to our public safety officers in the city, our fire department, our county, everyone that came together, not only here, but in other places in our county and state to protect our children. Appreciate it.
And I would echo those same statements, you know, it was a stressful day Tuesday, but as the city manager said, everybody went home safe. So, thank you. With that being said, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.